Sorry, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Carey.
Present.
Chilton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Present.
Councilmember Hutchings.
Here.
Ruffridge.
Here.
Nelson.
Present.
Student Representative Knowles.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I would like to note for the record that Mayor Whitney is joining us, listening in, so thank you, Mayor Whitney. With that, may I have a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda? Madam.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda and consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda or consent agenda?
I have.
Councilmember Hutchings.
Yes. Vice Mayor Parker has requested the changes and amendments to the agenda. Number one, due to unexpected conflicts with the auditors, they will not be present tonight. At request of the administration, I request the agenda item six, a auditor presentation be removed. The auditors will be available to present at the December 5th meeting.
December 15th.
And the second item, I would also like to request the removal of the executive session from the agenda as the review team for the city clerk position is not ready to bring applications forward to the city council for review.
Thank you. Would the clerk please read the consent agenda?
Approval of the November 10th, 2021 council meeting minutes, new business ordinances, ordinance 2021-25, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $6,000 in the general fund for a Federal American Rescue Plan Act grant passed through the State of Alaska Department of Education and Early Development for COVID-19 response and recovery at the Joyce K. Harbor Memorial-Sudatena Public Library introduced by the city manager, public carrying on December 15th, 2021. Ordinance 2021-26, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $18,770 in the general fund for a Federal American Rescue Plan Act grant passed through the State of Alaska Department of Education and Early Development for Chromebooks, mobile hotspots, and AWE literacy stations at the Joyce K. Harbor Memorial-Sudatena Public Library introduced by the city manager, public carrying on December 15th, 2021. New business resolutions, resolution 2021-58, approving an amendment to the Economic Development and Planning Department records retention schedule, brought to you by the city clerk, and new business informational memorandum, the 2021-7, the Kenai Peninsula Peace Crane Garden Trails Mini Grant Report, brought to you by the city clerk, and that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Madam Clerk, are there any remote attendees wishing to speak?
Vice Mayor Parker, there are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you so very much. Having no one wishing to speak on the approval of the agenda and consent agenda, it's back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the agenda and consent agenda? Hearing, seeing none, the agenda and consent agenda are approved. Moving on, public comments and presentations. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any items not appearing on the agenda? I don't see anyone here in City Hall. Madam Clerk, are there any participants participating by Zoom who have raised their hand?
There are no hands raised.
All right, thank you. Moving on, we have the Assembly and Legislative Report. I see no representatives from the borough or state in attendance who would like to speak. Do we have any participating through Zoom that have indicated that they would like to participate, Madam Clerk?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Moving on, we have public hearings. The first item is the ordinance 2021-024, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $51,694.54 in the COVID-19 Relief Special Revenue Fund by accepting grant funds provided by the State of Alaska Department of Health and Social Services. May I have a motion to enact?
I'll move to enact ordinance 2021-024.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Report from the administration, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. The city is eligible, according to a formula, to receive approximately $26,000 in a new grant program that the Department of Health and Social Services has offered, and it's called the Healthy and Equitable Communities Grant Funding Program. We were eligible for that amount, and then the Kenai Peninsula Borough generously reached out and asked the administration if we would be able to use additional funds if they made some available. And there's a letter included in the packet on page 14 from Mayor Charlie Pierce just to the state requesting that they double our allocation. So essentially, the city would be able to receive the full amount, the $51,694, directly from the state as a grant if this is approved by the council. This program was described by the state as being more broad in its scope and its objectives, as well as trying to achieve more long-term health outcomes with communities. So it's a little bit different than some of the COVID relief funds that we previously brought to you in projects, as this one is targeted broadly at improving health outcomes in communities and specifically reaching underserved populations which may not have an equitable access to some of those opportunities. In reviewing the grant criteria, we worked with the Parks and Rec Department and identified a scope of a project proposal that fits the needs of the program and I think would supplement some of our existing ongoing parks programs, and that is by supplementing our ability to deploy a mobile rec unit both in the winter and the summer to our different parks for different events. The granting agency has reviewed the scope work that's included in your packet and determined that it meets all of the requirements for the program, and the memo that's included, as well as the attaching documents, shows generally the scope of how we would intend to use those grant funds. Parks and Rec Director Carmichael is with us tonight, and I'm sure he can answer any questions. This initial grant award, they anticipate around two and around three. We don't yet know what those dollar amounts will be. They have not calculated them yet, but this would be the initial of potentially up to three awards that the city would be eligible for, and we would have through June 30th of 2024 to use the funds. However, if the council approved the ordinance and the scope of work that's identified here, we would move quickly to procure these items immediately. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Queen. The public hearing on this ordinance is now open. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? I see none in attendance. Do we have anyone participating through Zoom that have raised their hand?
There are no hands raised.
All right, thank you. Having no one else who wishes to speak, the item is back before the council. Councilmember comments. Councilmember Chilton.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. I see in the accompanying memo that we're looking at purchasing 120 pairs of skates and a bunch of other equipment to expand what I'm assuming the skate program up at Ark Lake. Is the intent if we buy all this equipment and set up this really amazing mobile station that participation is going to be free for the community? We're not going to be charging for that, is that correct?
It'll be an expansion continuation of what we have been doing, other than when we do the event at the Ark Lake we've been done, did last, started last winter, then we have nothing at the sports center left for the folks who come into the rink to pay. So envision that, some of the money we purchased or the existing cares fund. Also, we've expanded, purchased a movie screen and some additional equipment, so everything free is what the envision is here, be able to go to Ark Lake, be able to go to Sudatena Creek Park, as well as make a Sudatena Owl that would be just getting ready to flood in cooperation with the Kenai Peninsula Borough.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
And just to follow up here, as I always like to ask this question. So when we talk about skates and some of this equipment, is the replacement for this expected to be in the normal operating budget for Parks and Rec? Will that increase in the future? Can you just address that real briefly?
Obviously, yeah, with time it would be, but what we look at this is, this has a use life of, say, 20 times a year, whereas rentals skates in the sports center get used five times a week, 40 weeks a year in terms of those things. So, and one of the reasons we also included in there, you'll see on the list, is a skate sharpener, because even at a discounted rate, that could amount to $1,000 a year having the skate shop doing it, so we're trying to minimize those costs moving forward. Rental skates last about five to six years.
Additional questions? Councilmember Ruffridge.
No questions, this is a comment. I was really excited to see this. Actually, I do have a question. When is Ark Lake going to be ready? I'm excited.
On the smaller lakes, the depth is about eight to nine inches right now. We'll be able to, with the Ventrac unit we were funded for this year that we already have, or last year and the equipment we have, we should be able to be able to get that broomed within, hopefully this week, if not next week. Trying to look at, the folks asked me what we wanted to do. We have Ark Lake, Sudatena Creek, and Sudatena Owl to do, so we'll pick whatever we could get ready first and go from there.
Well, thank you for all you're doing. That's a really awesome, a great way to get outside in the winter, so I appreciate it.
Additional questions? So, are we ready for the vote?
Councilmember Chilton.
Yes.
Hutchings.
Yes.
Ruffridge.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles.
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
Thank you. We have six yes votes, and I do want to say thank you to the Kenai Peninsula Borough for providing the additional funding to help keep this program going. Thank you. Moving on, new business ordinances are all on the consent agenda. Next is resolution 2021-057, authorizing the purchase of a new crane for the utility department in the amount of $24,509.59 from Bob Services, Inc. May I have a motion to adopt, please? Councilmember Hutchings.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-057, authorizing the purchase of a new crane for the utility department in the amount of $24,509.59 from Bob Services, Inc. Second?
I'm second.
Thank you, Councilmember Nelson. I see no members of the public here wishing to speak on this item. Do we have anyone participating through Zoom that have raised their hand?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Having no one else who wishes to speak, it's back before the councils. Councilmember, oh, I forgot to report from the administration. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. It's fairly self-explanatory. This is a piece of equipment that was approved in the operating budget in the Equipment Replacement Fund. We, there are limited vendors in the state that can deliver this item as specified to meet our needs, and we did receive two quotes. As we mentioned in the memo, the quotes were very close together in price. One of them is a brand that fits with some existing pieces of equipment within our fleet, and our maintenance department manager, Scott Sundberg, has requested that the council authorize us to award the purchase to the bid that's approximately $64 higher because it would then assist with streamlining some of our equipment with our existing fleet. As this is not an RFP, it's an informal quote, we have the ability to do that from a procurement standpoint, not only to consider the lowest price, but also other factors that might be of importance to the city, and I bring this forward for your consideration from the maintenance department requesting that we authorize the purchase from Bob Services. Mr. Cornell is here. If there are specific questions about the procurement process or what we use this crane for, thank you.
Thank you again. Seeing no public members wishing to speak or hands raised, it's back before the council. Councilmember comments? Questions? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
Councilmember Hutchings.
Yes.
Ruffridge.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Carey.
Yes.
Chilton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parker.
Yes.
Student Representative Knowles.
Yes.
You have six yes votes.
With that, resolution passes 6-0. Moving on, we are now under item C, other, and it's Action Memorandum 2021-022, Discussion, Review, and Possible Action on the Existing Policy Regarding Masks Be Worn Indoors of City-owned Buildings During Substantial or High Transmission of COVID-19, brought to us by the city manager. Can we have a report from the administration, please?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. We brought this item forward just to allow the council to consider the policy that was adopted and put in place back in August. It's been three months since the resolution was adopted that required masks be worn indoors of city-owned facilities when we're in the higher alert risk categories, and we've taken additional steps at the staff level through signage and procuring additional masks and in some cases supplementing our workers with some volunteers to help promote that policy and educate members of the public. As I mentioned, as you've probably seen, the results have been somewhat mixed in what we've been able to achieve in terms of compliance. And really, I brought this forward just for discussion so we can get a sense from the council, kind of if we're meeting your expectations in terms of administering this policy, but also to bring to your attention the one section of the ordinance. We discussed it at the time, but there's not currently an end date to the policy, so it is indefinite until it's either amended or repealed, and wanted to just, again, I think after three months' time, kind of bring it forward, allow some discussion, I can get feedback from you, and if the council's interested, potentially action could be taken. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who would wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, are there any, no, no hands raised on Zoom. It's back before the council for discussion. Comments, thoughts?
Councilmember Ruffridge.
Well, you're looking directly at me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a few comments. I guess, just to get the ball rolling on discussion points, I mean, we're one of the only facilities sort of in the, in the area, it seems like, that, or entities that are, you know, requiring masks in our buildings. Our case numbers have been dropping in the state and locally as well. Vaccines have been available now for almost a year. We got the first vaccines December 17th of 2020, so that's coming right up. I just wanted to discuss whether or not, you know, consistently, you know, being in that masking state, how much, you know, are we, how much are we changing our trajectory versus, you know, just sort of sending a message? Is it time to consider dropping that, but still highly recommending that they be worn inside indoor spaces? One of the spaces that I feel like has a higher risk level is actually the one we're in right now, particularly if we have high public comment or public attendance. It's a pretty small space and can be filled with a lot of people, but buildings like the library and, you know, City Hall lobby and the sports center, unless it's, you know, packed for games, probably a little safer if it's just masks recommended. I think that potentially there's staff, you know, putting in a lot of effort to have people wear masks. I know the library, I've been in there a few times, and once, all my masks were disgusting in my truck, so I thought I'd grab one when I walked in the door, and there was none at the door, but there was a very kind library staff member that was Johnny on the spot with greeting me with a box of masks, so, but that's taking a job away, and that's not really what we have them in the library to do. So wanted to open it up for potential discussion and thoughts along that line of maybe it's time to go back to masks recommended, but not required.
Additional thoughts, comments? Councilmember Nelson.
So, I certainly agree with some of the things that Mr. Ruffridge has stated, and I don't think it's the intent of the council, and of course, I wasn't here during this original discussion, to make city staff be detracting from the things they're supposed to do in order to enforce this. I certainly can also question, in some sense, the effectiveness of us being a small island in a bigger area that doesn't require masks, and I've been spending a lot of time in Anchorage, which has a current mask mandate, but is very sparsely enforced if you're not at the airport, quite frankly. On the other hand, I do just want to throw into this discussion that we have a new variant that was discovered today, the Omicron variant in the United States, and listening to a news story here earlier, of course, our public health officials are reinforcing the message that it's not time to panic, but it is certainly time to make sure we're getting vaccinated and that masks do work. So, I don't think, I personally don't want this necessarily to be a symbolic move, but I can, I can see both sides of the issue. I don't think it'd be necessarily a wise thing to say, let's stop the masks in city building because we know it's the right thing to do, but on the other hand, effectiveness and taking things away from city staff are not a good thing. So, I know that's not very conclusive, but I just, I feel there's two sides of the issue, and both have pretty much equal merit, so, thank you.
Additional council comments? I'm not one to rush, and we don't need to rush through this, but, you know, I've gotten, I've gotten used to wearing my mask most places that I go, so, I guess if I was looking at it for establishing the threshold, as I look at the numbers, and I was, tried to look at the numbers today to see where the school district, where we were, we were at, like, 280, and the numbers were coming down here in the central peninsula. But again, we could see a reversal at, I think, at Christmas time, and things could spike again. So, I guess my question would be, as you were looking at potentially revising this existing policy, the amendments that you were considering?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. One, I think one amendment to consider is just if now is the right time to make a change. So, as I mentioned, since it's got an indefinite term of effectiveness, that would be one question I think that the council could consider and maybe determine that it's not the right time to make changes, but that was one thing I wanted to bring forward. The second is, related to that, is just what we've talked about, is a lot of our staff really prides themselves in doing very effective work, and I think, as we've all seen, this is a situation where we are trying to accomplish something that we're really going to just fall a little bit short on in terms of achieving a high level of compliance. And so the way that we've approached that is to really focus on our actions and make sure we're doing things that we think are prudent to help communicate the policy. So, for example, at the sports center, we've got signage, we've got masks, we've been working, as I mentioned at a previous meeting, with some local high school sports and academic programs to have them kind of volunteer and hand out masks. We've been working with the users of the facility to make announcements and announcements on social media, and even with kind of all those efforts, I think we've seen the level of compliance taper a bit since the start of the beginning of the hockey season, and that's a source of discomfort for me, for the staff, but it's not something that we can't continue doing. So I don't, I'm not suggesting that the current situation's untenable. I just wanted to be able to openly, honestly, have that conversation about the existing policy and our ability to effectuate high levels of compliance versus kind of what we've been doing, which is just focusing on kind of the steps we can take, but maybe not being able to control the outcomes to the normal, the level we normally would with implementing other rules and procedures. Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you. Councilmember Carey.
Just a suggestion to the city manager. I'd like to see it brought back to us end of January with a ending date end of January. It seems from what I hear, we may be dealing with this forever, and I do not wish to see the city of Sudatena require masks for, in our buildings, forever. I also am aware in terms of new variants and the new one, until that, to me, the end of January gives us a chance to see what's happening with the current new one, and it gives us a real place to discuss it. You can't put it on to do, excuse me, it would seem not wise to put something on to not do anything about, and so instead, there has to be a positive action, and so that'd be to take, take this off. And so as a recommendation, as one person, I would like to see it come back before the council in our last meeting in January with it being rescinded.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruffridge.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. I think Councilmember Carey brings up a great point when he says that this is something we might be dealing with for a significant period of time. In fact, it's hard to know whether or not, especially with variants and changes and things of that nature, whether or not we will have, you know, any sustained period of time not in substantial or high-risk transmission, and I think what we've learned, especially over the last year, is that the actions of the citizens really is not a controllable thing by this body or really anybody. And so I think maybe a recommendation from me is to change some of our language. You know, we've done, "All persons shall wear a mask while in public indoor portions of city-owned buildings." A simple amendment of saying, "All persons shall be recommended to wear a mask when in public indoor portions of city-owned buildings," to put the onus of the responsibility on the persons making the choice, rather than on either city staff or, you know, others to enforce those things. I mean, by this point, people know what their choice is going to be, whether it's to mask, whether it's to get a vaccine, whether it's to, you know, ignore some of the, you know, safety concerns in the, you know, pursuit of, you know, natural immunity, and people are making choices, and we, we can't sustain for months on end, you know, this consistent asking of people to abide by, you know, these city requirements, I don't think. I think it will go on too long. I think we did it at the appropriate time, when really we were, we were in a bad situation through the fall. I don't really want to repeat that again. It was very difficult for me personally and professionally to see that, and a little anxiety-inducing to see our healthcare professionals struggle, but, you know, I can't, I can't affect change in a large swath of people by saying, "Shall wear a mask in public indoor portions of city-owned buildings." I think a simple change to our signs outside the buildings that say, "When we're in substantial or high alert levels, alert, alert, please wear a mask," it would be a wise decision, but we're not going to, we're not going to force you to do so. That would be my recommendation for a simple amendment, isn't just changing the word "shall" to "All persons will be recommended to wear a mask."
Thank you. That would be under section one of the resolution, when the central Kenai Peninsula is in the substantial or high alert level for community transmission of COVID-19, as defined in section two, all persons, it is recommended all persons wear a mask while in public indoor portions of city-owned buildings. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I, Shelley was so kind as to give me a motion sheet, and I can make that an official motion if that's appropriate at this time, Vice Mayor Parker.
That would, that would be appropriate. That would, that would be appropriate.
Thank you. So I would move to amend our previously adopted Resolution 2021-036, a resolution requiring that masks be worn in public indoor portions of city-owned buildings while the central Kenai Peninsula is experiencing substantial or high-risk transmission of COVID-19. I would move to amend section one, where it says, "All persons shall wear a mask," to "all persons will be recommended to wear a mask while in indoor, public indoor, public indoor portions of city-owned buildings."
Second.
Councilmember Hutchings.
I'll second that.
Okay, we had Councilmember Carey also. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
So I, I agree that that may be a very wise and conscientious change. What I would like to just comment on is potentially the timing of the motion. So I really like Mr. Carey's suggestion of looking at this in January. And the reason that I mention, you know, if tonight is the night to make this amendment is, again, the variant that I, that I talked about, but it's, from what I've read, and I certainly could be, could be ill-informed, but experts have told us here, it's probably about two to three weeks to find out if vaccines may have to be adapted for this variant or kind of what that data is. You know, secondly, I believe the, I believe the end of the year is running out the mask mandate at airports and airplanes and some of those things. And I wonder if it might behoove us to look at some of that guidance and what those decisions are made near the end of the year. So just a comment on that.
Additional comments? Councilmember Ruffridge? Or, I'm sorry, Chisholm.
I looked at you, I knew it.
I knew where you were going with that. I guess right now, I'm also kind of leaning towards a, let's wait just a little bit longer approach. I think there's a lot of merit in the points that are being made with this motion. I just have a little bit of uncertainty with the way that things are starting to unfold. And I don't think that two months is going to make or break anything. So I kind of like the idea of maybe reconsidering this in January. So, thank you.
Thank you. I did read a headline this evening that potentially the mandate for masks in airports and federal facilities will probably be extended. So when you get on the train or the airplane, any public transportation, they're going to extend that potentially, it's a rumor. Additional comments? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I agree with some of the points brought up by Councilmen Chilson and Nelson, that the timing with a new variant. However, I would ask that we remember that Delta was a new variant, and that was what we initially made this, this item four was for Delta. It's hard to know whether or not there was success, or, you know, cases limited in any way by this ordinance or resolution. But I would say that Delta kicked our butt locally, you know, mask ordinance or not. I know that there is some public, you know, I guess, feelings of being told what to do in public buildings. And I think, you know, there is, there's a sense of sort of sitting by and waiting for something to happen that we're not quite sure is what's going to happen. And yet, you know, we've lived through a variant already once, and I'm not certain that this, this resolution, I'm not sure what it did. And that may just be a fatalistic attitude. But I think, as Councilmember Parker was saying, a lot of people wear masks even when it's not required. So Fred Meyer doesn't require masks, I wear one there usually, I'm sure others do as well. I see lots of other people in Home Depot and other places wearing masks. There is a sense of responsibility, I think, from the collective to do, we've, we've just moved past the emergency state, where, you know, we're making decisions really out of a sense of, we're not sure what's, what to do to protect people, and wearing a mask has a lot of great efficacy for prevention of disease. We're just in a different place now. We've lived through one variant, we have another on the way, people have a ton of choices to make. We also have new therapeutics that are on the way as well. Just, we're just in a different phase. And I just think, as a public body, we can, we can still educate people, hey, we're still in a high alert, please wear a mask when you're in all indoor public spaces. I think that would, that's still a great recommendation, and it's the recommendation of the CDC. But it just doesn't match our community at the moment, is my, is my concern. So that's probably all I have to say on that, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carey.
Because we have such a large crowd here today, and the agenda is so very full, I'd like to bring up a few issues. Basis of our government, again, as a republic, is limited government, consent of the governed, and popular sovereignty. I think we've been working on all of it. I think, excuse me, I have been working on all those things. I supported this and was a signer in terms of the original, because I felt I had an obligation to try to protect people, and felt that there were people that did not yet know the damage that could be there. I don't think a whole lot more education is going to do much at all for those people, and it's a large number, close to half, who say no. On consent of the governed, they do not want us to make them wear a mask. Now, we can say, well, you're not, for whatever reason, you should, but I understand you don't want to. From my standpoint, you know, part of, again, popular sovereignty, limited government, is those things that we're going to make them do, we have to hold them accountable to. I'm not willing to fine people for not wearing a mask. And so I don't have the credibility to say, you have to do this. I certainly don't want to see us put people in jail. And I know we can talk about there's not police powers to deal with this, but again, ultimately, what government does is we do have some force to make people do things. I want to protect the employees as much as possible. I don't think there's, excuse me, I find that there are some employees that are not concerned on the mask, in fact, they're not pushing it. And so what I think, we've done what is responsible. What I'd like to see, a lot more discussion about, is washing of hands. It seems to me the most common and the thing that every grandmother would tell a little kid, we've almost stopped talking about, and I know professionals have, but again, in terms out in public. I think one of the most important things you can do is just that basic hygiene, washing your hands and keeping services clean and those types of things. And so that, I did what I absolutely felt was correct in terms of sponsoring this and saying, we need to put it into effect. We have done that. I have no doubt the city in total good faith has done this. I think to the very best reasonable. People yelling at library workers over this really makes me angry, but I don't want to use the language I really want to use. But it's totally inappropriate. But in the same way, when people with businesses here in town, and I won't mention particular, I won't mention any place, but when they came and said that people were screaming at them for making them wear a mask, you know, because they wanted to protect their employees and each other, that really bothered me in terms of the lack of social concern, the lack of civic respect for each other. I respect those people who have a different view than I have. I really hope they're at least open to respecting me for the views I have when they differ with them. And so that, what I have been displeased on, and it's certainly not just the city of Saldana, let's talk the whole country, is this idea that medicine now has become a political thing. My goodness, I gotta tell you, I've got a germ, I want to kill it, and you can put any label you want, party on it, I want it dead. And so that, what I'd like to see, this is a part of a process of us, in a very small way, trying to bring people more together than pushing them apart. And so the idea of, the idea of a recommendation, from my standpoint, a recommendation is, at this time, is absolutely better than a mandate. What I hope that we're going to move toward, though, is saying, let's move away from this. Because we have educated the people, it's not like they haven't heard, those people that we certainly will continue to wash their hands, again, to wear masks where they think it's appropriate, to stay away from people who are impaired in different ways, I'm going to say, it seems to me a reasonable option for people to get their shots and boosters, but I'm not going to fight with people over that either. I'm just going to get mine and hope that they don't get sick. And so I appreciate that we, we do have, again, without hostility, we don't have hundreds of people here waiting to scream at us, no matter what we say. I think that we have been very responsible. I believe every member of the council has, that we understand we can only do so much. We have listened to what the federal government has said, we've listened to what the state government has said, we've listened to what our own administration has said in terms of recommendations. We have absolutely listened to the people. We absolutely understand that we're not God, that all people have a right to their view, hopefully they're educated, and they express it. And so I see that we're taking good steps on this. I will certainly support tonight the idea of moving it now to a recommendation, and I would still hope that in the coming months, if this passes or if it doesn't, I would hope in the coming months, the administration would come forward with what we need to do to do away with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carey. Any additional comments from council members? So to, before bringing this motion back before the council, I'd just like to say, we have done a lot to try to keep our community safe in recommending that people wear masks, they stay home when they're sick, they wash their hands, we social distance. I still don't shake hands with people, I still give them an elbow bump. But I think moving forward to recommend that people wear masks while visiting city buildings and giving the administration some more flexibility, particularly with the city employees, is a good way to go. And as was pointed out, this is not something that's going away. It's something we will continue to work with, deal with, for who knows how long. When we got this almost two years ago, we did not anticipate dealing with this, most of us didn't anyway, for a two-year period. And we could, two years from now, still be dealing with this, the effects from this pandemic. So with that, I would support the recommended amendment from Councilmember Ruffridge. Are there any additional comments before I ask the clerk for a vote? Seeing none, would you read the amendment, please?
Absolutely. So the amendment is, sorry, I clipped it altogether. The motion is to amend the previously adopted Resolution 2021-36, a resolution requiring that masks be worn in public indoor portions of city-owned buildings while the Kenai Peninsula is experiencing substantial or high transmissions of COVID-19. And, which brings attention to the title, section, resolution, section one, would read, "The central Kenai Peninsula is in the substantial or high, when the Kenai Peninsula is in substantial or high levels for community transmission of COVID-19, as defined in section two, all persons shall be recommended to wear a mask while in public indoor portions of city-owned buildings."
Thank you.
Just a quick question, if you might.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it possible to amend the title of a previously passed resolution?
Yes, you're amending something previously adopted, so yes, that title could be included.
Can I change my, my amendment then, to also add, changing the title?
Because the amendment now belongs to the body, that would require no objection from the body.
Thank you.
Are there any objections?
No objections.
Seeing none, go ahead.
Okay, I would just also add to that amendment, the change to the title of Resolution 2021-036 to a resolution recommending that masks be worn in public. Thank you.
And you had something you were going to say?
That was it.
Okay. All right. We'll call, please, on the amendment to Resolution 2021-036.
Councilmember Ruffridge?
Yes.
Nelson?
No.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
You have, I'm sorry, Student Representative Knowles?
Yes.
You have four yes and two no's.
With a four yes and two no's, the motion passes. Are there any other items that we would need to do with respect to this action memorandum? Yes, go ahead.
To the manager. Madam City Manager, I hope you will still keep in mind what I suggested we do in a few months.
Thank you, Councilmember Carey. Through Vice Mayor Parker, I'd be happy to reach out to you in the start of the new year and discuss potentially bringing this item back again. We will, I'll make a note to do that. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for bringing this back before the council. And let's, let's hope that our numbers continue to spiral down and that this new variant does not come to the peninsula or to our state. So, moving on, we have mayor and council reports. Reporting for Mayor Whitney, he asked me to remind the council members to let the clerk know if anyone is interested in serving on some of the AML, Alaska Municipal League committees. And the clerk did forward to you the note from Alaska Municipal League on those, on those committees. It's the Legislative Committee, the Opiates Committee, and Infrastructure Committees. So there are no reports from boards and commissions. Moving on, we have the city manager's report.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Parker. Nothing to report tonight, I just returned to the office today. I hope everyone had a good holiday. And I thank Mr. Cornelis for acting as city manager while I'm away. And I guess I will add, I just read a recent headline from KDL before I arrived, the Borough Planning Commission considered the ordinance to change the borough's process for planning commissioner appointment. And according to the KDLL article, the Borough's Planning Commission unanimously recommended that that ordinance be adopted. I know the Borough Assembly is set to take up that issue at their public hearing next week. And as the clerk had emailed the council previously, I believe she shared with you, the city's recommended candidates for appointment to fill the vacant Saldana seat is not on the Borough Assembly agenda. So they will be considering the ordinance, but filling our vacant seat, I don't have an update on where that process is at. Thank you.
City Clerk?
I'd like to give a brief update on where we are with the council chambers improvements. So the chairs came in at a very reasonable price, we had enough funds left over maintenance. Here in the next couple of weeks is going to repair our damaged ceiling tiles, trim out some speaker cutouts, paint, and then in mid-January, the new carpet will be put in place. And that will pretty much use the entire $15,000 that was approved in the five-year capital plan.
Thank, thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Thank you. So, public comments, members of the public have three minutes. I see no members of the, from the public in attendance here in our audience. Anyone online, Zoom?
There are no hands raised.
No hands raised on Zoom, thank you. Moving on, we have council comments. Let's start with the Councilmember Knowles.
The student council will be serving hot chocolate to the student body during finals and hosting a holiday spirit week, and we're currently selling class shirts to all students.
Thank you. Moving across, we will go to Councilmember Hutchings. Thank you. Moving across, we will go to Councilmember Hutchings.
Well, I'm sure all of you are going to be overeating cookies at the park on Saturday. But don't forget, there's also a bake sale for a fundraiser at the library on Sunday, a Saturday. And I'm excited about Ark Lake. I had two granddaughters here for Thanksgiving. And they said, you know, we are living at Girdwood, going to school at UAA, but it's more fun in Saldana than it is in Girdwood, and much more reasonable. So they went out and bought their new cross-country skis. And they were at Salt Heshi. And they said, when can we go skating at Ark Lake? So they're coming down on the 15th of December. And they're very, very excited about all the available trails and things to do in Saldana. Besides which, they went crazy on Shop Local. So they had a great Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ruffridge?
You saw the Christmas decorations going up today throughout town, and I always enjoy that. So another good work on that. And no other comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Well, I hope Shop Local is going well. I was in one of our local stores on Saturday, and it was quite crowded. So hopefully that is a good indicator. I appreciate the conversation tonight and would also encourage the city manager to maybe think about how to bring this COVID and masking discussion forward, maybe for something final or something along those lines in January. And certainly see, like I say, I see both sides of it and certainly respect this discussion, the opinions, because I think there were some very good points raised on both sides of the issue. So with that, unfortunately, I did have a conflict for next meeting. So I let the court know I am asking for an excused absence on the 15th. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Carey, you've got your list. I'm sure you'll keep it brief.
As always. I would hope I'd be allowed to serve on the AML opioid committee, if there's a space and it's a process besides that I could be chosen to sit on.
Is your microphone on?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, is your microphone on? Thank you.
I would be very interested in serving on the AML opioid committee and working with those individuals who are incarcerated and on the topic of addiction. I think it'd be very helpful to me to learn more and to share, and also for the community. And so whatever the process is that we need to follow as a council to be considered, I would hope to do that. I believe it's an informal norm that whenever we go on public expense to meetings and conferences and that, I think it's very appropriate, it sort of matters, to come back with a report of what went on there. And that's what I've tried to do when I've gone to these. And today I'd like to do that. I was very pleased to be able to attend AML through cyber. There are many presentations that are made that, in my opinion at least, it's not critical that three or four or 500 people be there present in chairs to look at the person. I absolutely understand on meetings, it's very important where the smaller group, there's all kinds of interactions that take place that are important. And I accept that. And so I just want to say for me, it was very helpful to be able to attend and yet to not have expenses for travel or for food or for lodging and those things. And a couple of the ones I would like to just mention. For those people who do not believe the government helps people, I wish you could have listened to the people from all over this state talk about how the, the CARES money helped them. You know, we know our own environment. We know, you know, I've lived, I've been there 60 years, and I've watched it grow. But I don't know what it's like to live in a community off-the-road system, a community that, again, if the single power source goes out there in the dark and cold. Listening to them thank government, they went from community to community to community. It was wonderful. Just look at the faces of the people from all over our state. And they just want to say thank you. They wanted to express the joy in having funds, for many, for the first time, to do things to help people in a time of need. And again, for Saldana person, it was really nice to listen to what all over this state was done with those funds. And, and the joy on those people on their, in their eyes and in their face, I was very pleased with. Listened to a number of speakers. And cyber attacks is always going to be one I really pay attention to. They said by the end of this year, there's been a 60% increase in attacks as compared to last year. And they talked about the many bad actors. They said that COVID in many ways left us very vulnerable because as we went to take care of the health of people and deal with those things, we weren't dealing with other things, and the attacks could come in. They talked about estimates for insurance, and it's impossible because no one knows what tomorrow's going to bring. And so any estimate they give you, they may have to change in a month, if not sooner. And so again, just very difficult because of how much damage. They did talk about, and I don't like this, but the city's right, I'm wrong, we need third level of authentication to resist vulnerability. We need more. When I want to use my computer with the city, I need to have more secure, I need to practice more security so that all, everyone is safe. They talked about a zero-trust security approach for government. And again, I don't like it, but I see where that is valid. I didn't know that it was illegal to pay ransom. It goes on all the time. We never hear about it. Basically, the damage is so severe, they turn off so many systems. You basically get a call, and yes, you guys are all dead in the water. And whatever you do, if you don't give us $4 million by this time, we're not going to do anything. They give the money. They turn the systems back on. There's all kinds of things where they put the malware in, and the malware doesn't even go off for six months to maybe eight months or 10 months. So you can go ahead and pay the ransom, turn everything back on, you think everything's fine, but you don't know there's that Trojan waiting in a few months to start different types of things. It is a real warfare. And I wish I knew what to do, but I just know it's a terrible threat. And we with government who have to trust, again, the security of people and who they are and where they live and what they do, I think it's very important. And I know our administration works very hard to stay up on things, but it's relatively impossible. I listened to them talk about the infrastructure bill and how much it's going to greatly help in terms of all kinds of things, $4 billion on local cybersecurity. And to the extent it's appropriate, I hope that we get to apply for some of that. And again, 80% goes to rural governments, they said, of that $4 billion. And we're one of the most progressive local governments in this whole state and country. And so I know that those things which we're eligible for that fit will be applying. They said the money has sunsetted for 2025. And so again, it's good to be early rather than late. They talked a lot about the tech exchange and it being available to assist local governments. And again, I know that this city has been very involved with NACO, both from a standpoint of elected as well as employees and appointed. And so again, I felt that was very good, too. Wave riders in terms of looking at different things to help, again, I want to keep us involved. They've mentioned, and again, they had very good speakers, well-known, most people think they will never get attacked. That's part of the problem. Because of that, relatively easy things that should have not been overlooked do get underlooked. I found the conference as a whole and what I attended, and again, I stayed here. I listened in on the large meetings. There was a very strong and good effort made to allow people to participate. And I'm real pleased. One of the things they talked about was one server that they got into in terms of with malware, and it infected 1.3 million Air Force computers, 800,000 machines. They were talking about the United States Airport is one, Air Force is one of the best there is in terms of protection, and they still got in. And on everything we do, we can't look at what went on yesterday because that's already passed. And the threat we face is tomorrow's threat, not yesterday's and not even today's. And so they said just part of being very proactive is that you have to have these minds that are thinking differently than what a simple person like me would think. And they're always looking ahead to see how can someone use this against us if they wanted to. I'm real pleased with AML. I think it is an excellent organization. I know that many of you that sit on this board, and again, that are part of our city government are very involved, and I thank you for all that you do. I want to thank the mayor for his action and his work on it. And again, applying that to become more involved on behalf of the city. And I know people like Pete Sprague and others have done a great deal to help the city. And I believe also our vice mayor has. And so I just want to say everything about AML to me is a real big plus, and it was really nice to be able to listen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carey. With that, there is no executive session this evening? Oh, sorry. I was mesmerized. So, go ahead.
Not much tonight. I would like to say thank you to Councilman Carey's report on cybersecurity. I actually work in the cybersecurity arena for local government networks. And I can say that frankly, the increase that we've seen in that sphere in the last two years is kind of terrifying. So any additional focus on that, that can be aligned in that direction is welcome. I would say that we did not have a Chamber of Commerce meeting last November. We will be having one in December, and I will be able to bring back a report on our December 15th meeting for that. One update on the structure of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors is that we're considering moving to a quarterly meeting schedule. So we might be having a few reports on that coming, but still hopefully same amount of information. And lastly, I am looking forward to Christmas in the park this Saturday. So thank you to all the staff that make, make that happen in our chamber, spearheading that. So, that's it.
Thank you. And I apologize. I was going to go from Councilmember Nelson to you before I went.
No hard feelings. I was just kind of enjoying that.
I apologize. So there is no executive session this evening. Meeting announcements, you see, the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for December has been canceled. The next regular council meeting will be December 15th at 6:00 p.m. here in city council chambers. With that, I hope everybody has a safe trip home and is out to be able to get out to Saldana Creek Park this weekend. Happy holidays, everyone. The meeting is adjourned.